All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the February meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, we have six members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on the agenda is roll call. Mario DeFolvio. Chris Judgeeats.
Here I am, rocking like a hurricane.
Thank you. Kelly Weiss.
Present.
Manny Priest.
Here.
Kyle Nedlich is not here yet, and Tim Sezni.
Here.
All right. Second item on the agenda is the approval of January minutes. And December minutes. Were they on base camp, too? Yes.
Yeah, I uploaded them, I think, a couple hours ago, or less than that, sorry.
Okay. All right. Did everybody get a chance to look at all previous meeting minutes? Any revisions or requests for changes? All right. I think we can probably approve them in one big motion. All right, motion by Chris to approve both. Second by Tim, all in favor. All right, that's six in favor, zero opposed. All right, on to the next portion of our meeting, which is seeker determinations. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. After all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. So tonight, our first seeker determination is for the applicant Kearney Realty and Development Group. Project address is 162 Henry Street, 180 Henry Street, and 206 to 210 Henry Street. This is a site plan modification for the construction of a mixed-use building with 65 dwelling units and 4,300 square feet of commercial space, as well as two ancillary parking areas in the C4 Neighborhood Commercial District and R2, 1 and 2 unit Dwelling District at 162, 180 and 184 to 186 Henry Street and 77 Pine Street. All right, welcome Dominic. Oh. All right, for the record. All right, Mario is going to recuse himself because he is related to the, well, to Dominic who is presenting tonight.
I tell you every time, I've never met that guy. My name is Dominic Camillo. I'm with CPL. We're the architect, I'm sorry, we're not the architect, we're the engineer for Kearney Development. My office is at 4100 Vestal Road in Vestal. So we are here in 2022. I think there might be a new face or two on the board, so I'll give a quick summary. Like Nick said, we have 65-unit apartment building with 4,300 square feet of commercial space. The apartments are broken up as 40, there's 44 one-bedroom units, 21 two-bedroom units. The vast majority of those will be low-income. There may be a few moderate-income units mixed in there. I think for our calculations, we figured there's eight that could go up a little bit, and we'd still be in compliance with parking and everything else. So like I said, we were here in 2022. We got a use variance for the parcel on Pine Street that's occupied by that rear wing of the building. And we got a handful of other area variances for setbacks and, I think, building height on Pine Street. Some of those have gone away with the recent zoning changes. So if you were to compare the two sets of drawings, the zoning, the bulk table, you'll see that there's fewer required variances. We've already got them, but we're not, I guess we're not utilizing them now. We came back after our 2022 variances, site plan approval, special use permit. We came back for an extension in 2023 that was granted. And I think again, at the end of last year, right, Tito? Okay. Which was also granted.
Could you pull the mic closer?
Oh, sorry.
Just want to make sure that the recording is picking it up.
Yep, sorry. So we got the 2023, 2024 extensions. Also, end of last year, the zoning changes were adopted by city council, which helped our parking calculations. And in addition to that, we added 21 spaces via four parcels further east on Henry Street that are going to be acquired from the city. That that new site plan is included in the new set. So we hashed out a lot of this stuff as far as bikes and garbage and all that stuff a couple of years ago. Nothing as far as the building or that original site has changed. And like I said, the the big change is zoning is is changed in our favor and we added parking. So with that, if you guys have any questions, happy to answer.
Yeah, Chris?
Back in 2022, I pulled this up. There were some emails back and forth with the folks in charge of the stadium parking across the street, which is going to allow you guys to use, I think, 30 lots, 30 spots at that time. Is, what is the status of that and how is that going to continue or not, or be impacted by all these other changes that are going on?
So that that was put in place. They basically, we looked at it as kind of a memo of understanding. They didn't sign anything because there was no building yet, but it was put in place to get us closer for purposes of applying for the variance at the time. At the time, I think we needed, based on the code, the zoning code at the time, we needed 79 parking spaces. And we were only providing the 10 to the west on Henry Street. Very early on, our first application, there was also another 10 or 12 on the corner of Court and Chapman Street that were then kind of double allocated. They were given to the fires, the new fire station. So they came out, we only had 10 spaces, we needed 79. And in order to make that variance more palatable, they went to the rumble ponies and and had that memo for for 30 spaces. That's not the intent to do that anymore. We're we're not needing the parking variance anymore, and we added the 21 spaces to the east.
If I could just point out one thing, there's a error was made in the staff report in the parking calculations. We didn't apply the new affordable housing parking requirement. So the staff report says that 73 parking spaces are required, but that is not correct. They need 26.
26 under the new guidelines, but they're actually providing 31 under the plan. So that's actually their plus five under the current guidelines, correct?
Okay.
All right. Just a couple of staff comments. The proposed ancillary parking lots will require an urban runoff reduction plan. No problem with that, right?
Nope.
Okay. Then basically this is saying, well, we just talked about, you don't need a requested parking reduction for this anymore.
No, but if, if, Tito, correct me if I'm wrong, if they, if if we do get the parking reduction, it would give Kearney a little more flexibility on adding a few additional moderate-income units. They, that's, that's really not their intent. We talked today, he's saying it's probably going to be around 10. We we put eight on the application. He said no more than 10, but just for the flexibility, if we got that 75% reduction from planning commission, it would just give them some leeway.
Okay.
It all comes down to how their application looks to New York State, frankly.
I think, I think if the, if there's a possibility that you're going to have more non-affordable units and therefore need a higher requirement, you should ask for approval for that, that number of non-affordable units. That changes the, that sort of changes the application, if that makes sense.
If if we just ask for it, it's just something we have, the applicant has in their back pocket in the future, correct?
So you're asking for a reduction of a calculated parking requirement. And that calculated parking requirement would change if you change the the distribution of the units. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how that I don't know how to.
Dominic, do you have specific numbers? Like, if you add X number of moderate-income housing or market rate housing, and this is going to change your calculus from you're required to provide 31 and have 26, you're not going to provide 31, but you're really going to need 34. Like, do you have those hard numbers for us?
No, right now, the hard number is eight moderate-income units, which require one parking space each, or the affordable units require none.
Okay, because I would say this, if you're going to ask us for a parking waiver, I want the hard and fast numbers, not like a, we'll give you leeway. No, I'm going to say like, no, you either got to provide 31, you got to provide 34, you got to provide 18. I want a hard number that we're either requiring you to provide or giving you a waiver on a specific number.
So, fair enough. As it stands now, we can add, if if they wanted to add, turn an additional five units right now, a year from now, from low-income to moderate, we would still be in compliance with the 31 provided spaces. Are we, are they okay to do that? Okay. Again, that's not the intent this all comes down to. Right now, I think the application is in for this year with the eight units. But if the scoring comes back or something and they need to, you know, fine tune that, this is certainly not a scenario where they're looking to pull a fast one or anything like that. The total number of units won't change. It's just a matter of how they get allocated.
Okay. Between now and the next meeting, would you have any updated information? Any word back about how the application was received, or?
I don't, I I doubt it. I I'm not sure when the, I know one round came back late last year in in October, November. So I don't think the next round of notices would be coming out, but I can, if there is one, I will have it for you.
Okay.
Did you get the notes about combining the tax parcels for 206 and 210?
Those are the building parcels, right?
Building parcels, yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was always the intent.
Sorry, those are not, those are the new parking lot parcels.
Yeah, that that shouldn't be an issue either. I think we'd already committed to to combining the parcels for the building.
Okay. All right, and then there was one last comment. Staff recommends a privacy fence along the southern property line of the parking lot at 206 to 210 Henry Street.
Yeah, there's no issue with that. We we kind of left it out because there's about a 10 or 12-foot embankment there, but not an issue to put it back into, to add it in there.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? Is this listed? Unlisted, okay. All right, I'll make a motion that the project is an unlisted action under seeker and that the planning commission should act as lead agency for review. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed, and I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing at our March meeting for 5:20. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right, we'll see you back in March.
Thank you. See you next month.
All right, and for the record, Mario is returning. All right, our next seeker determination tonight is for the applicant Doak Engineering Design PC. Project address is 333 Prospect Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit to construct a vehicle fueling station in the C4 Service Commercial District. Welcome.
Can I get this on?
Yep, and same thing, got it right into that microphone.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Beautiful.
So my client, my, sorry, my name is Brian Doak from Doak Engineering Design PC, Owega, New York, and my client, for the record, is KSJD LLC in Vestal, New York. It's in the application. The purpose of my clients coming here tonight is to seek the addition of a gas station at an existing convenience store at the location mentioned previously, 333 Prospect Street, and it's right at the corner of Glenwood and Prospect on the flat corner. And they would like to add a couple of pumps there and provide gassing service in addition to their convenience store. That, in a nutshell, is what the project's all about.
All right. For the record, Kyle has arrived. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Questions or comments? Chris, start us off.
Yeah, um, so I'm, I'm going to start with one of the comments in the staff reports. Staff has concerns about potential health impacts to the neighborhood properties from fumes and spilled fuel. So first, Tito, question for you. This is a, a zone C4, neighborhood commercial. Are there other zoning types? A C7, a C8, I'm making up numbers I don't know really exist, that would allow for commercial uses but exclude gas stations? Does such a subtype of commercial zoning exist? And if there's a concern, not that it would impact this specific application tonight, but is this something we need to look at longer term of if there's a concern with fumes and spilled fuel in neighborhood commercial C4 things, we need to create a C4B, you know, commercial, neighborhood commercial but excludes gas stations?
So to answer the first question, C6, they are not allowed in the C5 Neighborhood Office District. They are not allowed in the C3 Medical District. They are allowed. Yeah, sick. They are not allowed in the C2 Downtown Business District. So they're not allowed in half of the commercial districts. They are allowed in the other half. There is legislation before city council. It has not been signed out yet, but it's it's in committee to regulate the location of gas stations, and they would, if that legislation were to move forward, they would not be permitted next to a residential property or residential zoning district.
For the applicant now, Mr. Doak, can you educate us as to what steps are being taken to mitigate and minimize the potential health impacts from fumes and spilled fuel for this new gas station that's being considered with this application?
There is going to be still a containment vessel, which the, all of the material, the gasoline will be stored, and there will be float devices, emergency measures that would provide access or communication and alarms when there was a spill of some sort. There is also flotation devices, a rather anchorage to the, to the tanks to keep them from buoyancy from the ground and so forth, but other than that, it's a regular gas station. We have them adjacent to other residential areas, and I don't expect anything unusual in this with regard to any fumes or any spills or anything like that.
Tito, one other question, I guess procedural thing. The legislation that's pending before city council, will that impact the current applicant? Or, for lack of, for lack of a more diplomatic way, did he win the race to get their application in before legislation became enacted?
Yeah, as of right now, it wouldn't it wouldn't impact. I don't think, if the application has been submitted, I don't think the legislation would impact it. But I can look into that.
Not want to waste the applicant's time if we go through all this for two months and find a ha-ha.
Right.
The the pending legislation takes effect on some date before they begin construction as opposed to when we maybe approve a you know what I'm saying? I don't want to cause you more headaches than are necessary.
I think if they get to the point where building permits are issued, they they definitely, definitely would be allowed to proceed at that point.
Okay.
I I'm not 100% sure about whether they'd be allowed to proceed if they haven't gotten planning approval yet, when the legislation passes.
Okay, and Tito, maybe one last question for you. Besides what the applicant has just mentioned here, are there certain mitigation efforts that the planning staff would like to see added to mitigate the fume and spilled fuel concerns?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that the, the purpose of the legislation is that, you know, based on the research that staff did, the best tool to to combat impacts to public health from gas stations is to make sure that they're not clustered and to make sure that there are certain distance from, you know, sensitive uses like schools and residential properties. I'm not sure, there are sort of engineering tools that can be used to help with with spills and runoff. I'm not sure what can be done to address fumes from unburned fuel. So, so what, what the literature we've found recommends is just keeping gas stations away from residential properties. I don't know that you can do a lot about the air component of it. But I mean, we could give it some thought on how how the, how it could be addressed through site features.
All right, do you mind just explaining how you did the parking calculation to come up with your parking spaces and where they're located on the site?
Yes, the parking calculation is on the front sheet on the zoning code analysis. You'll see at 410-53 Off-Street Parking Vehicle Fueling Station, two parking spots per pump and one parking spot for 500 square feet of the building. And in order to make this work, we'd have, we are planning on knocking off the front part of the building. But if you look at the sheets, I do have the parking laid out on sheet two. You can see, I've numbered the parking spots. Number one in the lower left corner is a handicap accessible parking spot. That counts as one. And then you have stacking vehicles, two and three, and four and five are at the pumps. And then six and, or seven and eight are approaching, they're stacking, coming into the pumps, and then nine and 10 are at, or beyond the pump. At the pump, actually, they're able to fuel there. And then there's an additional, let's see, 11th, 11th one is in the upper left corner. And there is a lower right, I mean, rightmost corner in Glenwood, there's an existing parking space there, number six. That comes up with the 11 parking spots provided.
All right, so
can I just, while we're talking about that, so I'm I'm looking at this diagram, and I'm looking at parking spot 11 outlined in yellow there in the upper left-hand corner. If there's a vehicle parked there, can is it geometrically possible for a car to get out of that? I'll call it like a filling station with like a number 19 in curve. That seems like a incredibly sharp curve.
It is, but it's doable. Yes, I put a vehicle template in there and it worked fine.
Maybe this is a question for the planning. Can those, other than space one, six, and 11, do any of those other spaces actually count as a parking space?
So the, the code requires one parking space per pump and one stacking space for pumps. So the stacking spaces count as, as queued spaces. The convenience portion does not need parking. It's an existing building under 4,000 square feet. And so they just need the parking spaces that that correspond with the pumps. So one and 11, I believe, comply. So they have those two parking spaces.
Okay. All right, so really, all that they're required to show are two parking spaces and then two stacking spaces. One for each pump. Everything else is kind of extra. Okay. Do you have any idea whether the neighbors are going to freak out about this?
I have not done any canvassing, canvassing, and I haven't heard anything from the property owners.
Okay.
It's been a convenience store for, I don't know how long, but it's, no, it's not going to function any differently from that point of view.
Okay, I mean, the convenience store is one thing, but that is one heavy intersection to be trying to put a tractor trailer to be filling up for fuel stations and everything. The cur, are you going to be expanding those curb cuts there? Because the existing right now, I don't see how you could swing anything in with the curb cuts that you have.
Especially with parking.
Yeah, and on top of adding the fuel station, on top of adding all the cars that would be there. This intersection already is a nightmare at times.
Left, off of Glenwood, to go past like St. Sands Church. Good luck, you're there for like two hours. I I, I have, I have questions and concerns to be diplomatic.
Can I make a couple of comments? First of all, with regard to the vehicle, the deliveries, they would be off-hours, of course. You don't want them coming through there at the time they can come down. Prospect, cut across a property and go south on, is it Tracy, I think is the next one over. There would be curb cuts, that's what's in in the plan now to allow that traffic movement. So they'd stop at Prospect heading west, come across the intersection on a green light, so the intersection would be clear, and they'd be able to go in that way and go out the other side. Now, that would be with a large truck. What I show, a movement in the plans that shows a 65-foot, a WB65, and you can get smaller trucks in that for, for vehicle, for gas deliveries and stuff. And I did pull the accident, the, the traffic information for the intersection, and I found nothing. I did talk to BMTS about the intersection, about traffic issues. There was no recorded accident history related to the turning movements at Glenwood. The problem is that when you turn, when you're coming east on Prospect and head left, you head north on Glenwood, there's a problem with vehicles turning there because it's a sharp corner. So that's been an issue, but as far as it being an accident issue, nothing in the, in the data that was pulled, and I think they go back like, I think it was the last three years at least. So there was not, I mean, I was concerned too, but there was nothing that showed in the data. There were, there were a couple of other minor things that were not really related to. There was a, like a bicycle accident of some kind or something like that, but nothing that was associated with turning movements into and out, out of the commercial space that we're talking about.
Yeah.
We talk about the diagram on page three for a moment. Labeled the, the fuel delivery truck. So it shows a diagram. So it shows a diagram and there's, if you could describe for us and educate me, what is the significance of the inner purple line and the two outer green lines?
The, the lines on the leftmost and the rightmost are the sweeping movement of the vehicle moving through the intersection, moving through the, the site. So you can see the bill, don't be thrown off by the, uh, the orientation of the truck at the bottom of the picture because that's misleading. Of course it won't go that way. It, but it will swing to the left of the, of the, of the Tracy Road, Tracy Street, and then swing in through a new curb cut across the property. This is one way, the only way I showed, but I actually think it would be wiser to come in, in the other direction. Come in traveling west on, on Prospect. Stop at the light. When you have a green light, make the movement into the property, move through the property and swing out south, uh, be south on Tracy.
Well, what happens though? I get that that's in an ideal world, but, um, what happens to that handicap parking spot? Based on this, I mean, the handicap parking spot really, you can't have a car there. You know, that's kind of.
Uh, because of, because of the way the vehicle tracks. Yeah. Well, that can, now that I know that I've got a couple of extra spots, we could work on that and relocate that.
Okay.
We could put one parking spot on the inside and move the handicap to another spot.
Okay.
Um, one question I had on this diagram too, it looks like the outer bounds with the green lines, they're going through the landscape buffer. Um, is that showing an existing or new that would be installed in the truck going through that?
I think what you're asking is the, the landscape buffer, correct, on, on, on Tracy Road, Tracy Street.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, it would impact and I call out that we'd relocate the trees there.
Okay.
There are trees on each side. We, they're, they're city property, city plantings and city right away, but heart of the curb cut, widening the curb cut, we'd relocate those trees to make it work.
Okay. Yeah. I was looking at, I think it may be like smaller bushes inside the property line. It looked like it was going through those as well. So.
Yeah, we could work on that and move that, open it up a bit.
Yeah.
There's still the buffer. We'd still be providing the buffer required by code of the property on the south side, west side, north side and east. There's nothing on the east side right now.
Do you have enough room to swing for the garbage cans or the truck for that as well?
I didn't look at that, but I would assume that would be because the, what you see for the, the vehicle tracking here is for a WB sixty-five, which is a sixty-five foot wheelbase. That's a very large fuel truck that's used for, uh, gas stations of this size and larger.
Yes, my concern is even though that's where that truck is swinging in and out, if you've got your dumpster positioned to a certain way, how is that swing pattern going to go for that specific refuse vehicle?
The, um, the trash bins are there already, so I imagine the trash will be picked up the same, same way it is now. There's no change there. The only thing I changed in the plan is I provide the enclosure for the trash bins.
I, I will say this too. I'm also concerned. I don't know enough about the parking on Tracy Street. But if there's any off-street parking going on there, on that block of Tracy Streets between Downs Ave and Prospect, the, the ability for this delivery truck to swing, whether you're going in or out will be, yeah, that's, that's, that's going to be problematic at best. Because this is assuming this can be a wide open, you know, Wild Westers tumbleweeds and there's no pedestrians or cars and I don't, I don't, I don't know if you could commit to that.
Well, I can say that I'm not aware of there being any big issue with parking this residential parking. And I have, every time I've been out there and it's not like I'm out there every day or anything like that, but I've never seen parking on that stretch of Tracy Street. It's always possible.
But yeah, I think a couple of us here have Google Maps up and it does look like there's a line of cars perked across the street.
Oh, you're looking at Google Earth now?
Yeah, it's, um, we were just seeing if there was parking there and it does look like there's a line of cars parked there. So.
Well, bear in mind that the, the, the delivery of, uh, the fuel would be desirably off-hours. So we would expect that they'd have to figure out a time when there'd be less traffic on the street than, uh, than there is now.
If, uh, if there's a certain time when there's a person fueling on either side of the pump, can another vehicle bypass, get around those cars or they'd be stuck?
They'd be stuck.
They'd be stuck. Okay.
There's be sufficient room. There's twelve foot of lane on each side. So they would have to, either they're going to go get gas or they're going to park adjacent to, like that number eleven, whatever it was, or something in that area.
Okay.
Yeah. It's more of a convenience gas station. It isn't like a high, uh, high draw location. It's people that are going back and forth to work, going back home at night or coming in the morning. They're able to swing in, pick up a tank full and keep on moving rather than, it's just like they're going to sell ga, you know, gas for a buck a gallon and get a lot of people in there or something like that.
Yeah, Chris?
Nick, uh, a question for you and Tito. So one of the things we're going to be asked to do tonight is vote on Seeker.
Uh, well, to schedule a public hearing.
Are we, are we voting on the seeker tonight?
No.
No. Okay. If, if during or after the, the public hearing next month, if we as a board want to start, maybe the first time in a long time, start saying there could be moderate, large impacts as part of the seeker statement. What does that do to the applicant and the application? If it's not just, no, 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 minimal, 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 little, little, little. What if we start saying there's going to be some moderate, large impacts? What does that do?
If, if you find that there is potential for a moderate to large impact to, uh, hazards to human health, for example, um, you could issue a positive declaration based on that. And that has a, uh, another process that would have to play out before you could vote on the project.
So for each, each thing that we said had a moderate to large impact, the applicant would be able to do a environmental impact statement for it, right?
Right. They would have to show how they're going to mitigate those, those impacts that, that, uh, the board found might happen.
Uh, but it should be noted that, uh, asking somebody to do that is not a small request. Uh, that usually requires a considerable amount of time and research for the applicant or whoever's doing the work for the applicant. So just, just something to be cognizant of. It's, it's not just a quick, like a quick study this, it's, yeah. Usually, usually includes a PE stamp on most things. Professional opinions. Okay. All right.
Chris?
Yes.
I just also want to make note that it's, if we're talking about convenience for that area and everything, there's two gas stations that are currently uh, point three miles away on either direction of this said gas station. So, I mean, we're putting more gas stations on gas stations. Um, just throwing that out there.
Note that, um, in some people's mind, that may not be a bad thing. Competition's always good. Just consider that, that there's other sides to the coin.
All right. Um, I think it, it could be helpful between now and the next meeting. If there are other examples of places where a similar layout is already functioning. Um, I can think of like the Quick Fill at the corner of uh, Floral and West End. Um, that seems about the same square footage, uh, not quite the same layout because you can bypass if somebody's stuck at the, uh, is at the pumps. But, but if there were examples that you know of that are similar, I, that might help to, uh, to have some examples. Um, and I'm just going to speak for myself. For this particular project, it's like right on the edge for me and, you know, one way or the other. I think it'll depend a lot on the public hearing. If a lot of people come out and they are very concerned that this is not something they want in their neighborhood. If, I think it would definitely impact my opinion on the project. So, um, if that makes any difference, I just want to let you know. I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
But I was, I was, had the same thought of voting, voting for today and then, um, seeing what the public hearing brings out. Yep.
All right.
Yeah, there's not a lot of changes to the plans that would, you know, make this a, a better fit, in my opinion.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
I didn't quite hear that last comment.
Oh, I said, I, I'm trying to think of some changes to the plan that would impact my opinion or make this a better fit in my mind. And it's, it's hard to come up with anything.
This is a very small site.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you did the best design with what was asked of you. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments, questions, things for the applicant to think about between now and the public hearing? All right. Um, let's just make sure we covered the staff comments. All right. So the only other staff comment I think we didn't really cover, we kind of covered, but, uh, staff has concerns about the potential impact to both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. The eastern curb cut, which appears to be the most likely point of ingress egress to the site, is located adjacent to the skewed intersection of two roads that receives significant amounts of traffic. The curb cut is also abutting a pedestrian crosswalk. So pedestrian traffic is certainly a, a concern. I don't know that there's any way to improve anything having to do with pedestrian circulation, but, um, something to consider. All right. Um, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the establishment of a vehicle fuel station, which is an unlisted action according to Seeker, and that the planning commission should act as lead agency for review. So you get it by Kyle. All in favor? All right. That's seven in favor. Zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at five twenty-five at our March meeting. So you get it by Kyle again. All in favor? All right. Seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. See you back in March. All right. Thank you. All right. Our next secret determination is for the applicant, Pritchard Development Corp. Um, the project address is one thirteen Bavir Street. This is a site plan review for the establishment of a vehicle repair service business, towing service in the I three heavy industrial zoning district. Chris, I'm sorry that we didn't talk about this, but I do think I should recuse myself, uh, from this project only because I do know the applicant's, uh, well, and we're currently kind of working on a project together and I'm not sure that I would be, uh, impartial in a review. So Chris, are you okay?
I can hop up there. Yeah.
All right. So I'm going to recuse myself from this one. So you get Chris.
Do, I have a question. Do I have to recuse myself? I do know Brett, but I'm sure I can be impartial.
I don't think so unless there's something to gain for you, for you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. All right. So, uh, again, we're looking at the, uh, property at one thirteen Bavir Streets. The applicant is Pritchard Development Corp. Um, if you could please, uh, identify yourselves for the record and just tell us a little bit about the project.
Sorry, Brett Pritchard, Pritchard Development Corp.
I'm Brian Winters, Pritchard Development Corp.
So we're here on behalf, um, as a development company for, um, a local towing company that's looking to put up a new building for a repair service and towing business. It's a vacant lot over at, um, one thirteen Bavir Street.
Questions and comments? Okay. I'm going to go through a couple of the things that were noted on the staff report. First, uh, there's a mentioning of the rear setback is five feet, where twenty feet is the minimum in the I three district. The building must be shifted south or a variance must be requested. How do you guys plan to address that concern?
So we spoke to the owner and he would like to go for the variance because the way that the property is set, where he'd have to really set the building back, it probably just makes more sense for him to go for the variance.
And Tito, you can alert them as the process they go before the zoning board of appeals, I'm guessing?
Yeah, they would need a variance in that case for the rear setback and for the rule requiring that parking not be between the building and the street.
We, uh, we discussed as well, the parking there in the front, we can eliminate that because I think the requirement is only four. So he would just use the parking that's on the side. So we would eliminate that part, the parking in the front.
Um, another point on the, uh, staff report is the proposal requires an urban runoff reduction plan. Are you guys in the process and will be prepared to present that as part of the application in the future?
Yes, in the future, yes. That was part of the future plans that they had with our civil engineer. So.
Tito, when do they need to have that submitted to, to the planning department? Is that before the public hearing? When is that needed?
Ideally, there, there will be a preliminary ERB submitted, uh, before the, the planning commission process is over. Um, it's up to you guys. The, we don't typically require a completed ERB until the building permitting, uh, phase of it. So they don't need to complete the ERB to get planning approval. But typically, uh, a preliminary ERB is submitted, um, for the engineering department to take a look at and give comment to the planning commission. Uh, but again, there's, that's not a requirement.
Okay. Um, if the planning commission were to ask for that, would you guys be prepared to develop one before, say, next month, the preliminary one?
Absolutely. Yes. Yep.
The other thing was, I see there's a couple of things about, uh, screening and landscape buffers. And you guys are prepared to address those and a revised, uh, plan to submit before next month?
Yep.
Okay.
Chris, Tito, this is a question for the two of you. And instead of just having to put in that they have to have it done by next month, could it put in contingent upon that being done by the, you know, the start of the project of the?
Which part? The, the urban runoff reduction plan? Yeah, that could be a condition. That's been done as well.
As opposed to being done, you know, because these things.
The other things, the changes to the site plan, uh, it's, it's up to you folks, obviously, but we would recommend.
Those being done.
Those being done. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Those things work for me. Any other questions or concerns? Comments? All right. Um, so am I going to be just making a motion to schedule the next public hearing? Okay. Okay. So first I would gladly take a motion to declare this an unlisted action under Seeker. I see a motion from Manny and a second from Tim.
Sure.
All right. Uh, all those in favor declaring this a unlisted, uh, action under Seeker? Raise your hands and say, and I am seeing six yeses. Okay. And one recused and I don't know, we call that an absence. I don't know how that works. Nick's hiding in the corner. Um, and then I'll take a second motion to schedule a public hearing for next month at five thirty, if I'm doing that math correctly. I see Kelly and, uh, Kyle as the motion and second. All those in favor of scheduling the public hearing for next month? All right. Six yes, unopposed. We'll see you next month.
Thank you. Chris, you did a good job.
Nick, how come it always goes faster when Chris is in charge? Every time.
All right. Uh, let's see. So on to our last secret determination tonight. Uh, for the applicant, A three Binghamton LLC, the project address is thirteen Aries Street. And this is a site plan review and specialist permit to convert an existing residential building into a congregate living facility with seven sleeping rooms in the R three residential multi-unit dwelling district.
Hi, I'm Paul from Amicus Properties, Mangreno. We've been here before. Uh, even with this property, because we had done the parking lots, uh, issues prior to this. Again, shooting there with zoning, but we, we definitely, um, acquired. Again, shooting there with zoning, we we definitely um acquired this property and like some of the other properties that we've been before you, uh it was already a seven bedroom house. Uh we'd like to just make it official and show that we have the five parking, that we did the layout plan. I've got some photos to show that we did put the curb in and everything that was suggested by the group we all agreed upon. That was done two days after uh you awarded it and told me that we couldn't go ahead and do that. Um, this is Mike Major uh from Major Engineering. Go ahead, Mike.
Yep, uh Mike Major, Major Engineering. We're in Johnson City, New York. So the site plan that you have in front of you in front of you is what was provided to the zoning board. Obviously, we've got five spaces here, seven bedrooms, uh based on the geometry of the vehicles that'll be parking here and the ability for those vehicles to enter and exit the site. We felt this was the most possible parking spaces that could be um included on our site while still having some area uh for snow storage, for plowing. Um but we do show two um spaces. There are the red dashed lines on Ares Street um for on-street parking uh to try to accommodate all the bedrooms that are being proposed. Uh and then the floor plan is essentially just a floor plan of what exists today. Uh as Paul said, the property was purchased in this condition. Um I did see one comment regarding the office, the fact that it could potentially be converted into a bedroom. Um but there's there's a couple of issues with that. You can't necessarily uh enter that room without going through the bedroom next to it. Additionally, there's no no closet in that room either, so uh the intention there is to have that bedroom and office operate as one, effectively one bedroom area for uh for the occupant.
Alright. Pretty straightforward.
I think.
Okay, any questions, comments? Kyle?
This is more of a general question, maybe not project specific. Um does your business anticipate future residences? Do you see future ones that maybe require this processed down the line?
Right now, that that was the batch that we had gotten that did not conform with with the city. We're in the process of another thirteen properties. That's not until March, and I have not seen anything that needs a resolution like this.
Okay.
Uh going forward, I'm just trying to get caught up.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted that.
That we're on the same page with everybody, and Tito's been very helpful with us. Okay, Paul, this is what we need to do.
Yep, thank you.
And thank you, Tito.
Chris, yeah.
So I have a a concern I wanna bring up. So I'm looking at the floor plans. And I'm looking at that, I guess this is the second floor, the office, that's listed in the lower left-hand corner. That's not bedroom number eight.
No, it's not. You can't you can't get to that bedroom from the hallway. You'd have to go into someone's bedroom to come into that bedroom.
I I understand I understand that, but I guess my concern is, is anything that we approve, Tito, correct if I'm wrong, then becomes applicant for whatever. You sell the property to somebody who may not be a reputable landlord and may try to turn that into a into a it's not bedroom number eight, wink wink. So my question is, I think this is something that we did with a previous applicant with a previous building. Is there a way that we could, now this is just my suggestion, remove the door and the wall make it just an opening between bedroom number seven and the office so that nobody in the future is tempted to create an illegal eighth bedroom in that room?
Until they build it like they've done, and you understand what I'm saying? I can conform with that, take the door off, but you have to go through someone's bedroom. I can't rent a bedroom to someone to say, hey, you gotta let Joey come in through your room in the middle of the night all drunk.
My first apartment, my first bedroom. Had to go through my sister's bedroom.
And again, I'm I'm coming before the board to make sure that I'm getting the accurate account for the bedroom count, so.
And, you know, you guys wouldn't wouldn't be approving this as a bedroom, you know, if, let's say, the action was approved. Theoretically, the next owner would have to come back and show that we're providing a closet, there's access to the bedroom.
My concern is that the next owner is going to make it an illegal, uncounted eighth bedroom.
Right.
And sell it as such. My goal is, what can we do to make sure that a future bad guy owner doesn't turn that into an illegal eighth bedroom? That's why I was wondering if we took that wall out and just made it one big open space, an open floor plan, to quote from HGTV. If that reduces the risks others becoming in the future, and am I the only one who has that concern looking at the floor plan? Maybe I'm just off base.
That Steph had the same concern, so we're not off base, but, I mean, realistically, they can take it all apart and maybe just put it back together again. I mean, they can make, they can do whatever they want inside this thing once they get the approval.
Could put a couple more walls in, make a couple more bedrooms.
I feel like we can review it on what somebody in the future might do, yeah.
From us. Uh that's why I'm here, is to try to get the proper bed count. Right now, it's only rented out to five kids right now. Next year, I'd like to go to jump it up to the seven, but I wanna make sure I'm conforming. That's why I went to you guys, Brian.
One of the comments that Steph made was that was to come to us and and ask for it to be eight bedrooms. Is that anything that you've thought about or?
No, I think it was a miscommunication. I've always wanted the seven beds, like it said. That's not a bedroom. I can't sell that. That I can't legally do that.
That it may have been a me, Paul. I think in the original application to Tito, we had called out eight bedrooms, but I counted that, I should have counted that office as an office, not a bedroom, so that was that was my fault.
But this paper shows it now.
Yeah, I I sent over an updated.
I guess something to think about between now and the next meeting, I guess, just that wall, but I guess I working with uh carpenters at BU all day, I know how fast they could put a wall up, back up with a door, so yeah.
And I could use that money to repair a porch or do an uplift on the face of the house so that I'm putting positive money into the house. That's my only answer on that. We have quite a few houses in this town, and I'm trying to do upgrades. I understand where you're going, but that's not why I'm here. I wanna be legal. We're a very big corporation, and we're not trying to do anything back in.
Yeah. The good news is, I guess, as soon as it got flagged and code went in, and if it was being used as a bedroom in the future, not by you, it would immediately kick them into violation, and they'd have to come, I don't know, what happens if you give a violation? You have to come in here to either get it approved or just undo whatever you're doing that's illegal?
They'd get the notice of violation, and then they'd have to fix it by going to the planning commission. Um or they'd go to court.
Okay.
It's not like they could.
Steps there, but that's.
It's not like they could fix it real quick and throw a closet in there. You still need to be able to access that room without going through another room.
Yeah, so. Okay. Alright, any other questions, concerns? I guess the only other question is, um so if you're, if parking in those parking, the angled parking, you do have to, you pull in, you do have to back up that driveway and back out onto the street?
That's correct, yep.
Alright, so then a a nine foot, is it a nine foot driveway?
Yes.
So nine foot driveway, okay.
Yeah, the 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 zoning board basically approved the substandard parking area to allow them to fit as many spaces as possible.
Alright. Alright. No other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Alright, I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing residential building, which is a type-two action under Seeker, and that no further environmental review is required. Up, second by Kelly, all in favor? Alright, that's seven in favor, zero opposed, and I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing at five thirty-five at our March meeting for the project. Second by Kelly, all in favor? Alright, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Nick, what day is the uh March meeting again?
What's that?
What day is the next meeting?
Oh, great question.
It's usually the same day, February and March, right?
It's March fourth, yep, it's also the fourth, cool.
Alright, March fourth.
You're lucky, I'm.
Alright, that concludes secret determinations. Uh we do not have any public hearings or final deliberations tonight. So on to other business, which includes a zoning code corrections amendment.
So this is a zoning amendment. All zoning amendments um go to city council, who then refers it to the planning commission for a recommendation, which then goes back to city council. So we're asking for a recommendation to council, hopefully to approve the legislation. Um and what this does is corrects some issues. Most of what you see in that amendment is removing stuff that's not supposed to be there. Uh the, there are some new things, though. So there's a definition for cooperative housing. That was requested by a member of city council. There is a requirement that fences have to be maintained in good condition and a and a uh length of garage sale regulation. Those two things were requested by the zoning officer to help with enforcement. And then there are changes to a bunch of language around uh daycares, home occupations, which are home businesses, and some other things, and those those sets, that set of changes is based on changes that New York State made in their language that we had to follow. Um so I can take any questions.
Tito, I asked this only half with humor. So there's an issue with there being permanent and semi-permanent yard sales around the city?
There is, yeah. It doesn't pop up often, but it it has popped up probably once a year. Um and, you know, it usually it's someone has a yard sale for, you know, several weeks at a time.
There's a guy on Tremont. It's every day in the summer.
Yeah, there's repeat offenders, and um there used to be a regulation in the code like three versions ago. That somehow got removed. I don't know why. Um that could have been also a mistake, so we wanted to put that back in.
Alright, anybody opposed to a recommendation for approval to city council? Alright, anybody wanna make that motion? Alright, motion by Chris for approval. Uh second by Kyle, all in favor? Alright, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Alright, um any other business? I would I would, I'm just curious, um I did see that the owner of USave has passed away. Um, I'm not sure if it's the person that's running USave, but it was in the obituary, it was mentioned that he was I think the founder of USave. I'm just curious if that's cuz it seems like everything's been cleaned up around there recently, did.
That has not been the result of any action we've taken, if it's been cleaned up. Yeah, we we haven't gotten there yet.
Looking better than it has previously, so. Alright. Any any other questions or concerns? Alright. Public hearings, yep. Alright, motion to adjourn by Manny. Second by Tim, all in favor? Seven in favor, zero opposed, alright. Mario, I'm sorry, six favor, one opposed.